Pledge of allegiance. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I'll move it.
Second.
Second by Taylor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Items two through six constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item two is approval of the minutes of the December 12th meeting. Item three is approval of the claims. Item four from the county treasurer includes A, approve the property tax refund requests or parcel ending in zero zero six in the amount of one thousand three hundred and thirty dollars. B, approval of lifting of tax suspensions for initials BM. And C, approval of lifting tax suspensions for initials PB. Item five from human resources includes A, approval of memorandum of personnel transactions. B, authorization to initiate the hiring process. And item six from the county auditor is approval of application for a twelve month Class C retail alcohol license with outdoor service sales privileges for loft of view events effective twelve five twenty-three through twelve four twenty-four. I'll move the consent agenda. Second by Bittinger. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Item seven from the deputy county recorder requested for action, Diane Solado-Peterson. This is approval to purchase and install new carpet throughout the recorder's office.
I made the request last year on our CIP. Never done that before. And I checked with Dennis. He says the funds are available. They're approved. Our office has consistently the largest amount of footwork here. We have five little departments in there in our vitals and our recording. We get a lot of people in there every day. Our carpet looks really bad. Kind of embarrassed if you go wrong. So some of the other offices on first floor, they're very, very nice. Not complaining about that, but just would like some new carpet that's not worn out. I'm asking for approval.
And I guess, you know, I'm good with doing this, but on a timeframe wise for maintenance staff to be moving everything, do we have, Kenny, do you have kind of an update of what that would be? Or are we thinking six months from now? Or are we thinking it's just the timing of this?
The timing is going to be the difficult part of this. I'm not opposed to replacing the carpet in that area. It is getting to the point where it needs to be replaced. The logistics and the timing of doing the project is going to be the problem. My best guess is I certainly wouldn't be able to look at it within at least the next six months.
We'd be happy with that.
When I say logistics, I mean things like moving staff in that department from one side of that area to the other side while they're still keeping their operations going and then trying to replace half the carpet and then swapping and doing that vice versa. So it's going to be a time consuming and logistics, figuring out how those steps are made and get to the end result. That's going to take some time. Time that the LEC or currently building isn't allowing me to have, so.
So I guess as far as bidding it out and saying date to be determined, would that be something we can do or would it just be?
I can get a, I can price the replacement of the carpet itself. Typically vendors won't move any personal items and their workstations or things like that. I don't know of a company that does that. There may be some. I'm not aware of any. That's the struggle portion of that. Just if it was an open space where we could just drop the carpet in like this room, it wouldn't be too difficult.
The other issue you're going to have is all those little cubicles hooked together.
Yes.
Like out in the main area, the big conglomerate of like five of us are all hooked together. So when they take that. And we'll still have to, if you're going to do it during the week, we're going to have to be able to function. So when they did it however many years ago they did, Kenny wasn't here, they, it's laid carpet. We didn't get the squares. We got like the black carpet, so. And I don't really remember what they did. I think they tore everything apart. Maybe they did it on a weekend. I don't really remember.
Most of them do the squares now, of course.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So is it fair to say that if we approve this tonight, that it'd be done by July first because we'll be within this fiscal year window?
It wouldn't be done by July first.
Would not be. So if we approve this tonight on an FY twenty, what does that matter in terms of?
No. You're going to approve it tonight because we're going to use unused CIP funds from previous fiscal years. We're trying to use that up so it wouldn't be in our borrowing we do in May. We'd have the funds on hand. But another thing too, if Kenny doesn't have the time, can they get a bid and somebody to do all the moving for them? Seemingly they can't do it till July first anyway.
That's something we can look into, yes.
Will that exceed twenty thousand dollars then? If that's the case, would you anticipate? How much more would you anticipate? I know that's kind of an off the cuff question, but five, ten?
I'd say maybe another fifteen.
Dennis, does that look like he's volunteering out?
Just a timing issue, I guess. You want to obligate thirty-five thousand, up to thirty-five thousand.
I don't think it makes sense to pay an extra forty percent.
Or sixty percent. He could get a bid both ways. See what it costs.
Let's just obligate the materials and he'll come back with a.
With a labor potential.
So I'll move to approve the motion to purchase and install new carpet throughout the recorder's office in the amount of up to twenty thousand dollars in CIP.
Second.
Motion by Taylor. Second by Nelson. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Item eight from board administration. This is for information. I asked Heather to put some stuff together. Between this meeting and the last, I received notice. First, I'll read the item. Discussion of county responsibilities, planning and funding due to the resignations of the Woodbury County Medical Examiner and pathology medical services of Suland effective March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. They're giving us a couple months extra notice, but this is definitely a big deal and something that's going to impact county perhaps budgeting wise as well. So Heather could speak to some of the specifics on how it all works. But I think that we can defer most of this discussion until probably the sixteenth because the ninth or the sixteenth, because I'm aware that having spoken directly to Dr. Bryner since the letter, it's clear that even though we do have the resignation letter in our packets, the state medical examiner's office is, has some serious heartburn about this happening and would like to come to a board meeting and help us figure out a way forward so that there is not this impact to our county, which would be great. So this is just an FYI. As soon as we heard about it, we need to, you know, make sure everyone knows that this is something we're going to have to keep in the back of our minds. So we've attached the current agreement, the resignation letter and the cover sheet. So again, this is just a kickoff point. Would rather share the information as soon as possible rather than not. But again, I think this will come up and perhaps hopefully be adjusted or even rescinded in the coming weeks. Fair enough? All right. We'll move on then to item nine from board administration. Dennis Butler, this is for action. Approval of funding of the Millville Frontage Road project using FY twenty-four CIP funding instead of TIF funding as we previously approved.
Yes. After talking to Jason Kaminski, our attorney who does our borrowing for us on regular CIP projects, and we use another attorney for TIF projects, but Jason's well adverse with the TIF here. So what I'm proposing here is not to use TIF on this project because the problem is we had to certify the TIF by December first to be able to levy a tax next fiscal year. So with that said, if we do a CIP, and I'm going to round it off to four hundred thousand, that we can go ahead and borrow the money, but we can also do a pre-levy agreement to levy it for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. If we do TIF, we have to advance the first principal and interest payment without TIF and we can go with a CIP, we can levy the money. The one thing I'm cautious of, I hate to start using a whole lot of this TIF because in two years, we're going to have to take the process of borrowing anywhere for this interstate project, anywhere, depends on grants, but the worst case scenario is about twenty-five million. Best case, maybe a lot less than that, but we have to have the ability to pay if we have to borrow the money through TIF. So I'm recommending we switch this to a CIP and we'll borrow it this year, have the money in May so they can get their project rolling. They can actually get it going. If the board approves it tonight to go ahead and use CIP funds, they can go ahead and start the project. We'll get the money in May.
So I know I asked you this and I probably anticipate the answer, but I'll just ask it publicly. My only heartburn with CIP is that we are going to debt service over a five-year period. Is that correct?
Correct.
Versus with TIF, we're not going to property taxes at all because we are sort of borrowing against future revenue. Correct statement?
On a TIF, we're actually borrowing against the increment valuations in this TIF district.
Right. But still, again, not being paid by a five-year note over property taxes being paid off. Okay.
The thing is we just have to come up with the first year. But it's too late to use TIF now anyway. It had to be done by December first.
I know it's not as clean and I know the answer, but I'm just going to raise it. So if anybody else likes this idea, but borrowing for that first year versus the other eighty percent being TIFed, I'm just looking ahead to the steep hill that we're going to have to climb over the next budget year and just raising it as a possibility. I know it's not as clean. I don't know if anybody else has any desire.
With this first year, does that, wouldn't we still have to take out a five-year?
We'd have to take out a five-year loan, but with TIF, we'd have to advance the first principal and interest payment because you couldn't levy the tax till twenty-five, twenty-six. With a CIP, we can levy the tax right away and debt service is unlimited. I realize it's a little money, a penny per thousand to levy, you know, raise a levy for five years. But again, I want to protect our TIF somewhat for a project two years from now.
So the idea would be you'd be borrowing eighty thousand over five years' time versus four hundred thousand over five years' time. And so instead of paying off eighty thousand per year, you'd only be paying off, and I don't do math that quickly in my head, but sixteen thousand a year. And I know it sounds small right now, but I just know when we get to budget time, all these small things that seemingly don't add up are going to. So just an idea. I mean, I won't make the motion if nobody else likes it.
I like the concept, but in practice, will it work?
We're going to have to come up with ninety-six thousand the first year somewhere. We can't use TIF for that ninety-six because then you're talking bond issue and a CIP loan, so.
So how about ninety-six for the first year CIP and then TIF-ing out the rest of it? I know you don't like it.
We still have to borrow for the ninety-six thousand, so we just will go with a CIP and get it done.
So my friendly disagreement with Dennis, although we like each other, I hope that's more in one way. The ninety-six thousand that we have to borrow for, it's kind of like, well, since we're going to borrow for the ninety-six, let's borrow for the three ninety-six, which is approximately what it is, right? Three ninety?
Three ninety-nine.
Ninety-nine. Okay, so three ninety-nine.
So I round to four hundred thousand.
And I guess to me, if we could take three hundred thousand and put it onto tax increment financing and not against property taxes over five years' time, I would prefer to do it that way, but.
One more point.
Sure.
When we do a TIF bond, you do bond issue, then we're going to have to get somebody to do our financial, like DA Davidson or whoever. Because now you're dealing with a bond where you're going to have attorney fees, you're going to have a financing fee. Where if we do it with a CIP, we go directly to the bank and handle it all. It's a lot cheaper.
What if you wrapped it into a certain Elk Creek project at the same time?
Do what?
If you wrapped it into that Elk Creek project that we had originally talked about doing, wouldn't you mitigate some of that? Potentially?
You possibly could. Again, then if we do the loan, which would be in March, then you're talking another two million. But half of that will be offset by the sales charge. You're talking another million. So now upfront, we're going to have to front two hundred thousand plus the interest plus the eighty, ninety-six thousand. So now you're talking about three hundred and forty thousand the first year we're going to have to front.
You're saying that if we do?
If we do a CIP, you're still going to have to borrow the money for a CIP. If you do a TIF, we're going to have to come up with money upfront. You don't want to split a project into CIP and TIF. You need one or the other.
Why is that?
What?
Why, forget Elk Creek for a second. Why, what's so bad about doing ninety-six thousand?
First, you're going to have a CIP loan, then a year from now.
We would have that either way, right?
Huh?
We would have a CIP either way, either for three ninety-nine or for ninety-six.
For ninety-six thousand, which is kind of, it's ridiculous to borrow money for ninety-six thousand when we can do it all in one shot. And then you're going to turn it into a TIF project. The cleanest way is just do a CIP. Forget the TIF on this project. Save the TIF revenue possibly for our project two years down the road.
So is a ninety-six thousand a year over five years, that's what, two cents per thousand?
About a penny. I had to figure it out here. I think it's one point six cents per thousand.
Okay. Well, our valuations must be really high then.
They went up quite a bit. And the debt service is up over six billion valuation that we can use to offset our tax ask. And Matthew and Dan did sit on a conversation with Jason Kaminski.
One point six, you said?
One point six cents.
Really?
You're talking pretty big valuation base.
What would we have done if this came up during last week?
The what?
What would we have done when this came, if this came up last week? Would we have said, we'll still make it work? Well, this is a question for the board. Would we still have made it work or would we say this isn't the deal?
I think last week I brought up doing it through CIP.
Yes.
Remember that? And you said, no, we should do it through TIF and a couple. And I understand that you had a conversation with Jason subsequently. I get it's not as clean. I'm just, boy, if it's three hundred thousand, that's not nothing. Sorry for the double negative, but.
Got twelve percent increase in our valuation.
It's big. Because in this case, we can use the new values on our debt service where for our levies, it's a whole different game, which we talked about to the legislature. You can't use new valuation because on our general basic and real basic, they use a new valuation to push our levy down.
Okay.
We know we're going to be able to levy as soon as the tax base is finished, which is very, very close with minor exceptions, but I know pretty much how much we can get new valuation over our current valuation for just a general basic and real basic. General sub is not covered by this law and neither is emergency or debt service.
I'll go ahead and move it like this.
Second.
I made a motion.
Move it like this, meaning through CIP.
Case. Okay.
Second by Nelson. Any further discussion? Yep.
If that's the well of the board, I'll go along to get along. I'm not, am I held to die on?
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. And you are welcome, Millville. Item ten from the board of supervisors, myself and Mr. Nelson, two items for action. Two motions for action, but it's one item that I'll, that I'll read, which is titled. Approval to advertise for and hire a county engineer position and advertise for and hire an assistant county engineer position to replace the assistant to the county engineer position. County engineer Mark Nera came to the board as liaison and he is engaging in some legacy planning for his last several months with the county. And I think this is a really appropriate and really appreciated step that he's taking to give us this time to plan for a replacement. And also, of course, the assistant to the county engineer Ben Kussler is retiring December thirty-first. So we need to make a decision on what to do about the leadership in the county engineers department. And when Mark Nera wrote a letter to the board, which is included here, he had an idea to bring up a new assistant county engineer position, which would be a licensed professional engineer and to promote that person to engineer and to take personal steps to make sure that happened for the good of the county. But I think, you know, Mark and I both looked at this and we asked him, could we take this item over and could we just kill two birds with one stone? We're not looking to only do one or the other. We want to have an assistant and a county engineer. So it makes more sense to the two of us to simply hire both positions knowing the unpredictability of the economy right now and employment and staffing. We don't know if we'll get them tomorrow or six months from now. So whenever we do get them, they'll be trained. Whoever is hired will be trained and that's the key. When Mark Nera joined the county, he told me he had never been through a county, you know, he was kind of thrown into the budget process and it'd be nice if we could get someone either a waiting in the wings county engineer or an assistant county engineer to go through that process with him. And we need to get a well-qualified person for both positions because it's a critical role. We're probably going to end up taking another county engineer employee from another county. That's certainly what happened in our case. Mark Nera came to us with twenty-five years' experience and this is not something that the county board's not going to be, I mean, we are going to be involved in this. We're going to be involved in the hiring, the interviews. And so again, rather than hire one and then try and work through the next one, I think we, we think we need to advertise for both and go from there. It will have a budget impact. There's no getting around that. But having the, you make one big mistake on one of the biggest department budgets in the county. You're going to pay for that real quick if you don't have someone that's been, had months to be shepherded and then taught by our county engineer. So the numbers we're talking about, I got from Melissa in HR before the meeting was county engineer position would be posted approximately one hundred thirty-five, five hundred to one hundred sixty-two thousand. And assistant county engineer would be from one hundred and five thousand to one hundred and thirty thousand. That's what we would be looking at. And with that, is there anything else you'd like to add, Mr. Nelson?
Obviously, it's an enormous department and we're right in the middle of the gravel road revitalization project. We've got the interchange project and not only do we have Ben Kussler retiring at the end of the month and Mark, obviously sometime this next year, but we also had two district superintendents that had been at the county for a very long time that have retired in the last year as well. And so we've, you know, Fortune Gray had a lot of experience in Woodbury County. And so we're just at a juncture here where we're losing a lot of people to retirement, very happy for you. But we, we got to replace them with some good people and I think it's amazing that we've gotten a timeline to be able to work on this. And I think it's very, very important that we get on it as soon as we can.
So a couple of questions. Thank you both for this agenda item and for working with Mark and nothing but appreciation for, for Mark and all of his experience and know that sometimes we're not hearing all the compliments. When things go right, we don't often hear it. When things go wrong, of course, we do. So thank you for all that you've done. So am I to understand that the only budget impact would be the overlap? Or would there eventually be an actual, another FDE that would be added over and above what we have right now? Sorry if I'm slow to the take.
No, no, there would just be the overlap and I believe the assistant county engineer, county engineer position is slightly higher than the assistant to the county engineer position, which we would be the authorizing. And the reason for that would be just to try and get a licensed professional engineer in the office. It's typical to have more than we have in our county.
And so do we know what that budget impact would be if we ended up hiring someone in the next sixty to ninety days? And I see Mark making his way to the podium as well.
Well, to know that, we'd have to know his exact retirement date, but he's wanting to give us, you know, several months' notice and.
You know, Ben Kussler's salary was about a hundred and five thousand. And however many months it takes from January till date of hire for the assistant would be money that would go toward that new position. The funding would all come out of the secondary road budget for this, so it wouldn't have an impact on your real basic or general funds. We would make it work within secondary roads. I think that's what Dennis was going to say too, but you know, when, when I moved here and moving expenses and all were an expense to the department, so.
And then in terms of if we're hiring for Mark's replacement, is, is my understanding that that person's going to be in this assistant to the county engineer position for that time or not?
We're allowed to hire one or more licensed civil engineers who will be known as county engineers. So the person who would be the next department head can be hired as county engineer. Then you're saved from doing a second hiring process later. The assistant county engineer would be the one who would be leading up the design efforts and, and keeping our construction projects and everything on track, similar to what Ben had done in the past.
So they'd be two separate positions.
They're two separate.
The reason is because we can't find a way to promise someone that they're going to be hired and then promoted, you know, so.
But you can, you can hire them into the county engineer position, then it's just him now, you know, when I walk out the door. We did this at Lynn County where we had three county engineers actually. All three of us had the same authorities under the Code of Iowa and the same title. One was senior and he was recognized as department heads.
And that was one thing I talked with Melissa about last week is that we would make sure that Mark would be the senior engineer while he was there until his retirement, at which time the position that we potentially would create tonight would then become the senior engineer. We would dissolve what was Mark's position. We would just go back to one county engineer, but then would have, we would have added the assistant county engineer.
So fast forwarding, we have two FDEs, Mark and Ben, and eventually, no matter the overlap, there'll be two FDEs that are left. That's.
We'll end up with the same.
It's the same staff size.
Yep.
And the department needs the same number of bodies. You know, if, you know, last time we weren't able to find a licensed county or a licensed assistant county engineer, we hired a civil engineer intern who's on the way toward licensing in Jacob Gilwraith. We don't know what the future holds. We may find ourselves hiring a second civil engineer intern headed down that license track. That's something that we'll see what we bring in for applicants. I think you'll definitely get applicants for the county engineer position though. What buries a good county and a lot of challenges and a lot of work and that's what many engineers would be looking for that are currently at smaller counties and still can bring good experience to the table.
Plus they get to work with all these guys up here, right?
Well, that's right.
I do want to thank you, Mark, and it's not a surprise, you know, you're, you're a guy that always plans ahead. So to see this on the agenda this week, you know, I, I just thought that's, that's Mark's character, you know, planning ahead. And so I want to thank you for that. And, you know, for the board's knowledge too. Mark is very instrumental in a lot of the work that Simco does in the, in the tech committee or technical committee and has been, you know, either chair or vice chair for probably, I don't know, a decade. I don't know. It's.
Off and on.
Yep, so.
When nominated.
Yep, and just, you know, thank you for coming forward and working with these guys to put together an item and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right. I'll move to approve to advertise for and hire a county engineer position and advertise for and hire an assistant county engineer position.
Second.
Second by Nelson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. And for item B, I'll move to approve the deauthorization of an assistant to the county engineer position effective December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Second by Bittinger. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Item eleven from the board of supervisors from myself. This is for information. This is open discussion of best practices regarding open records requests and how the county may improve its communication or implementation of chapter twenty-two to serve the interests of both the public requesters and the public taxpayer. Open records requests have increased over the years in frequency, scope and legal review requirements. It would benefit all involved to discuss best practices and how to ensure consistency. Woodbury County currently has no open records policy, but it is not required to have one. If a policy was adopted, ideally all elected offices and associated legal entities such as the LAC authority would be involved in and endorse the result for consistency's sake. sake. In any case, Chapter 22 is being and would be followed, and I'm also aware that KTIV plans to be involved in this discussion, would like to approach the board at some point to discuss a letter they have, have given to us. The county has full-time employees in IT and the attorney's office, which absorbs certain costs with other legal entities connected to the county do not have. Also, the cost to requesters must be reasonable and actual, but there is some confusion, I believe, about costs leading up to estimates, proposals, or estimates slash proposals slash revised requests. In other words, the, the legwork that goes into revising a request or giving a estimate and everything that goes into that. So I've, I've talked about this with several different parties, and at this point, as I say in the item, I'm not recommending a certain course of action, but see a few items, a few options to consider. When I would ask the county attorney's office for some, some help, I would get directed to Chapter 22 and found it is fairly detailed and does answer a lot of these questions that the public, I think, is not as aware of as, as they could be. So the options I see is, is one, we make no change to our practice, but we improve communication through this discussion and dissemination of information. Two, we recommend the board consider and adopt a policy at subsequent meetings and begin revisions on attached template from Johnson County. I asked Heather in the board office to supply that. It's in the backup. There's a sample policy from Johnson County, which is fairly detailed, and one of the things that is beneficial from a policy is it lays out some, some costs for different, whether they be copying or time. I believe the code allows you to do that after 30 minutes and make sure they're reasonable and actual. You don't add benefits or anything like that to people's time, but it does lay something out you can just direct people to. That, that is a benefit of that. And option three is refer by consensus or future motion, if you want to discuss this again later, to the Policy Review Committee for recommendation. I know they haven't met this year, but they would meet for this, and I believe it would be an appropriate avenue, but it doesn't have to be done that way. This could be a, something the board discusses. We already have a resolution to look at and model, or sorry, a policy. So yeah, I introduced the topic. I've had conversations with Mr. Nelson about this. I don't know if you would like to continue to discuss, and we'll go from there.
Yeah, this has come up in relation to some FOIA requests from KTIV with the LAC Authority and, and my, and Matt, you may know, because I've only been on since September, but since I have been on, there's been three. The first two were very short, very simple, roughly under a half hour of work. We provided those to KTIV free of charge, hand them over. We're currently working through kind of a lengthy one that we've gone back and forth revising. You know, they had a lot of keywords, they came with a lot of hits the first time, so we're kind of working back and forth. And so that's, that's what this, why this discussion has come about, as far as we want to be transparent as possible to the public, but we also understand that we have attorneys and contractors that have expenses putting the stuff together for entities, whether it's a member of the press or a private citizen or whatever, so we're just trying to be mindful of the press and the public, while also be mindful of taxpayers. So that's what I'd like to add, and I guess we turn over to Matt if he wants or if you have anything else to add.
Was there anyone else on the board that wants to open up? Yeah.
So I, I've got a couple of things. I'm appreciative of the agenda item. I personally, I like number one, make no changes in practice. I think any time a policy is created that is, can be seen as extra or extraneous to Chapter 22, I think that there's danger in that. So to me, the auditor as a custodian of records relies on the county attorney for legal advice unless this board authorizes otherwise, and our policy's Chapter 22. I think sometimes these policies can be fraught with dangers, going above or beyond or limiting more. And then I just want to make one point on the LAC Authority, if I can. It's a difficult position because the LAC Authority is a separate entity, and yet all of its funding ultimately comes from us, and it only exists because we gave it breath to life. And so the one thing that I just would advise is July 1 of 2022, there were substantive changes to Iowa code, and one of them you mentioned, which is if it's under 30 minutes, then it's basically free. But the other one, and I just want to read this, is from Allers and Cooney emphasizing, "The new law provides that fees for legal services in connection with the production of records should be limited to the redaction or review of legally protected confidential information." And then the Iowa Public Information Board takes it a step further and says that doesn't mean reviewing all of these emails to see which ones should be confidential and which ones should not. So I just, I'm hopeful, I know that we have good attorneys supplying advice, but I hope that that's recognized, that it's only actually redacting the information, not reviewing hundreds and hundreds that could potentially be. So those are my only, my only points.
Anything to add, Joshua? No?
Not at this point.
Okay. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Hi, I'm Matt from KTIV. We're here to ask you for money, which I know is your favorite, favorite thing. Yeah, as Mr. Nelson said, we asked, we sent a FOIA request in for, at first, frankly, about the fire damper issue, but now we understand there are other problems that have pushed the project past its substantial completion date, and so we're looking for the records, the contemporaneous emails, documents, texts, you know, written piece of paper, whatever they may be, that document exactly what happened in the moment. First, you know, obviously, when we have a meeting, we can talk about it, and we can do interviews afterwards, but as an investigative guy, I like to rely on the firsthand documents that we have. The latest invoice we had was for $3,015, and not that it's the LAC's fault, because I know they're relying on private individuals to do it, which I think is part of why the cost is so high, but that is extremely expensive in my experience. We've had requests from, for instance, the governor's office for thousands of emails for less money than this. And so I think there is no more important documents that we're after right now than these documents, especially because they impact every taxpayer in Woodbury County, and I think that this would be a great opportunity for the taxpayers. Obviously, they'd have to pay this cost, but we'd commit to making those documents available to everyone. As a practical matter, we post them all online. Secondly, any other media outlet could request the exact same things we just request that happens, you know, on a regular basis. And we're not against either. If the LAC Authority wants to hand out, you know, flash drives or however they want to do it, Dropbox, whatever, and send a link to every media outlet at the exact same time, we're cool with that, too, because we believe this is important. And so we'd, we'd ask the supervisors, as you mentioned, Mr. Taylor, this, all the money's flowing that way, we'd ask the supervisors to, to pay that cost, to have the authority release the responsive records. It's just so expensive, you know, the, the invoice calls for charging for a senior IT specialist to look through the emails. I don't, I guess there must be a junior IT specialist, too. $50 an hour for software, which is a little confusing to me. And I, and to your point, Mr. Taylor calls for the, for Ms. McDougal, I believe, but I could be correct if I'm wrong, to review every document herself, and I think she's charging like 400 something dollars an hour to do it. So it's just very expensive for, for us to bear, and I think this is perhaps one of those instances where, wouldn't be for our benefit, it'd be for every, every person here and every, for the board probably, too, to see some of those things and for the citizens.
Thank you. And for point of clarification, you're working with an attorney through KTIV?
Yes.
For this request?
Yes, we've, we've engaged our firm, whatever they're called, and I think there's probably racked, there's probably racked up a, a good amount of expenses already the authority probably has just going back and forth on this with some of the revisions, because she's been primarily responding to us, I believe. And so I'm sure just for her to, you know, do the email or whatever, probably costs whatever, quarter hour, 400 bucks, so I don't know how much we've already racked up going back and forth.
So at this point, with the sort of back and forth, where is the ball now? It is, you've received a, this $3,000 proposal?
That's correct. My understanding is we received a proposal for $3,015. That's down. We did limit our search terms. We're not asking to search the LAC Authority members' emails anymore, just searching Shane Albrecht's and Todd Wick's.
Just for situational awareness, are you limiting that to emails or are you including cell phone records, texts, different things as well?
Right, so I think it, it, there was 891 emails, I think, is what, now, that might change because we put the date till that we get the records, but the last we had is 891 emails. And then there are, and my understanding is an undetermined amount of non-email documents, and I don't know, I don't know exactly what those would be, but I'm assuming they're memos or reports or, you know, I don't, I don't know exactly. But we'd like to see, to see both, but we're not opposed to working out, you know, if there are documents that we don't, the public wouldn't benefit from, we're not opposed to coming to some sort of compromise.
I guess the difficulty in this is, as you've seen this push and pull with the County Board of Supervisors and the LAC Authority, it's kind of far be it from us to tell the LAC Authority, okay, here's how you should handle it. I don't know that that, number one, would be received very well, and number two, if it's even appropriate. The question that I have to the gentleman R. Far Left is, can the County Board of Supervisors pay for another entity's FOIA request? Is that legal, advisable precedent setting? And, and so it's not that I'm trying to be obstructionist at all, I want to, I want to see if the information and anybody get the information that they need, but that's really the matter that's before us tonight, isn't us weighing in on how the LAC Authority should handle it as much as it is, are we writing a check?
Right, and essentially, and I understand the, you know, the reasons for the requests and the, you know, the, the information value that it has to the media and to members of the public that may be interested. I'm not sure that it's something that the board could do from the standpoint of using public funds for that purpose. The, the entity that receives the request, they may have the ability to waive fees for requests in certain situations, and it would be different if the board was the one that actually had received the records request, but I wouldn't view this any differently than, you know, a citizen that makes a request to the city of Sioux City and, and they, you know, the charge isn't something that they feel that they can come up with the money I, I just think that it gets, it's questionable as to whether that would be an acceptable governmental expenditure to pass it on to the taxpayers as a whole. And aside from that issue, if the board could do that, it would, it would set a precedent going forward where, okay, the next request that comes in requesting funding, how would we differentiate? You'd get into, okay, well, you're looking at the content of the request, and does the board agree with that or not? And I think it's a slippery slope to go down. So from a, I think from a legal standpoint, you need to be careful here, and then just from the potential for what this means in the future, if you did approve the request, I'd give an additional word of caution on that.
If an entity believes that the requests or the, the costs associated with what they're being charged are not reasonable, do you know their avenues? Because it certainly, I don't think, lies here in terms of judicial review or anything otherwise.
Well, I can, I can just speak as far as, you know, requests that I've been a part of and dealt with, and, you know, obviously, we're not in a position to give legal advice to outside counsel, but I'm sure you're very aware of the role of the Iowa Public Information Board and, and avenues there, and I, even in complaints with the board, I think that their first goal is to, you know, make sure everybody understands what the law is and see if there's a way of fulfilling the request that is, is workable for all parties under the scope of the law. So the Public Information Board is out there. To the point about attorney's fees, I did ask that question of the authority's attorney if there was anything in the estimate, and, you know, anytime we do, anytime there's a public records request and there's going to be fees charged, we provide an estimate. But what's actually billed is going to be the actual time that's spent on it, and could be more or less than what the estimate is, but the estimate is going to be directly tied to the scope of the request. So, but I did raise a question with the attorney as far as, is this only for redaction of confidential documents? And what I was told was that any attorney fee would be strictly limited to that. I think in their estimate, they have maybe two hours of attorney time, and they believe that the number of documents is, you know, over 1,000 documents. So to me, that doesn't seem unreasonable, but again, it would be the actual time spent that would determine the amount.
Yeah, and we're not a, we, we've considered going to have a Public Information Board, but frankly, as someone who lives in Sioux City and who, you know, lives right down the street, it's going to cost the taxpayers more by the time we litigate it out in, I have a Public Information Board for, for Ms. McDougal to go back and forth with the board and for our attorney, I'm sure, to do that, it's going to cost probably more than $3,015. And it feels like, I mean, we could force the issue, maybe we win, maybe we don't, maybe we come to a compromise, but it feels like by the time we're done with that, we're going to have cost the taxpayers more money, frankly.
Joshua with, or Jeremy, since you brought it up, with the recent changes to the law, is it, is it fair to say that more costs now are being borne by the general taxpaying public because there's less that we can charge or are able to charge for?
I'm not an attorney, but I, I think the, the spirit and tone and tenor of the legislation was for there to be less cost borne by the requesting entity, so that it was, hey, if this is, you know, wanting two documents, then charging somebody, you know, some outlandish thing like, well, we calculated our board administration salary by this, which, you know, so, so I think that is, give the people what they're asking for, and then instead of charging more, like we're charging attorney's fees to review, you know, all of the documents, it's no, only for the actual redaction. And I'm, I'm only reading this from Allers and Cooney's website because I was just Googling about it just to see, and it says, "The new law provides fees for legal services with the production of records should be limited now to the reduction or review of illegally protected confidential information," and then, so I think it's less rather than more in the spirit of sunshine laws and transparency. I, I don't know if you think that's accurate, Joshua, that the...
Yeah, I, I think that the legislation in regards to the charging of attorney costs has, has narrowed that, that the legislation in combination with the way that the Public Information Board has in an advisory opinion told us what the, what the language in the statute means. So on the narrow issue of attorney fees, yes, it's very limited. Beyond that, it still goes back to reasonable actual costs, and that those are the touchstones of charging for a public records request. I think the legislation also added the 30-minute rule, so basically, if it's a request that can be fulfilled by the governmental entity... can be fulfilled by the governmental entity within thirty minutes, then that should be done at no charge. And it, really, on public records requests for governmental entity as large as the county, where we have a number of full-time employees and people that are familiar with requests and where the documents are and all of that, it's not difficult to absorb a request into the normal duties of those full-time employees. We have a unique entity like the LEC Authority that doesn't have any full-time employees and has unpaid commissioners that aren't involved necessarily in the day-to-day operations. The distinction there, it's outside people that are doing the work of the authority at this juncture in its, in its life, and so I can see why there, there's additional costs incurred when there is a large request.
Well, I, you know, I'm not trying to say that I don't want to hear the information, I'd love to hear it, but at the same time, you know, what you're requesting is also something that is currently probably the subject of future litigation, so obviously, every one of those emails or documents that's going to be given out would require some kind of legal review. Like you said, I wouldn't mind seeing what's found either, but at the same time, the LEC Authority and the county are two separate organizations. I, you know, I can't tell them what to do, and they can't tell me what to do. As far as the county paying for it, I don't think we would pay for it based off, you know, the, like, if you had requested it on the city or anybody else, it's a separate government organization, we probably wouldn't pay that either. However, I don't know if there's community members that would love to pay for it. If you, you know, put a Christmas request out there on your report for a request for the public to help fund three thousand dollars, you might find those willing to help provide it i- in one broadcast, you know, but at the same, yeah, go ahead, Dennis.
You know, Joshua hit it on a slippery slope. I was informed by another elected official, there's been two more requests for the same information, the Channel Four requested two, so what do you do with them? That's a slippery slope here on, if you would pay for it, you got two more standing next in line, so really, it's the LEC.
And, and that's what I was just going to jump to, Dennis, after Keith, talking with Jody and with John Templar, the County Board of Supervisors attorney, and with Joshua this past week, you know, all three have advised that it would create a precedent, it would create a slippery slope, and then there would be no end as to not only future FOIA requests, but ones that have done them in the past, didn't go through, that now would come back and say, well, hey, we want this covered, where does it stop and start? And so, speaking for myself and the authority, we've got no worries about those documents and what they contain, but we do have, we have amassed, amassed time in doing all this work, and that's, that's on the taxpayer ultimately, because we don't, it's not our money, and so that, that's, you know, we've been generous in the past with, and actually, I know in the code, it's thirty minutes, Jody's personal rule herself is an hour, and so, you know, we've, we've been helpful where we can and then try to be transparent, but on something like this, it's, we just can't pass this cost on to the taxpayers, nor can we do it over and over and over again. And so, I guess, for me, I just don't think that it's something that we can fulfill, and if you guys want to, you know, continue to work on that, that's, I mean, that's, that's one hundred percent your choice, I'm not going to sway you either way, but I do tend to agree with Jeremy on this, that I think that if we adopt some sort of policy, it's something that has, it's going to have to be kept up for years to come, and I think that if we make no change and any member of the, of the public or the media wants a FOIA request, then they're on the hook for that, and it's just clear, and, you know, and I think that the county and the authority going forward, we've shown we're willing to, to produce those documents and try to keep costs at a minimum, but at some point, if the, if members of the public or the press want that, they're going to have to be on the hook for it.
I guess the reality is that because of the LEC Authority not having the full-time staff the county does, that any background work that's done by the LEC Authority on ultimately unfulfilled or, or canceled requests is being funded by the county. I mean, we, they don't necessarily have a budget line item for, for this and didn't anticipate it, and the board didn't either. So that is, you know, an indirect way that the county is, is continuing to sustain the LEC Authority. But I put this on the agenda to hopefully get ahead of an issue, and that was basically, that was basically it. I do see the, the merit of what's been talked about as far as when the code updates, then you have to change your policy, and you don't want one to be in disagreeing with the other, so, but Joshua, is there any, I mean, do you see any benefit to any further clarification by the county or public information as far as, I don't know, the cost of pages or anything that's definable? Is there anything that we can define to help the public understand what the cost estimates will be, or is it all case by case?
Just historically from the, and I've been with the county for, I think, thirteen years now, and most of that time in the civil position, so there's been a number of open records requests that have come across my desk, and I haven't really found myself in a position where we weren't able to find the answer or point to an answer either in Chapter Twenty-two or guidance from the Public Information Board. I think the important thing is keeping the dialogue open between the county employee or official that's communicating with the requester and just being upfront about, you know, if there's an estimate and how we got there, and, and seeing if there's a way of talking about the scope of the request that, you know, we can still get the, the documents that they truly want and the information they truly want, but also, is there a way of, of talking about the scope that helps us get to that information sooner as, you know, very precision as opposed to casting a wide net that, that takes more time and effort and money? So, I, you know, ultimately, it's up to the board whether they choose to look into creating a policy, but from the standpoint of somebody that's been involved with a number of requests, I don't feel like it's something that's been needed.
Yeah, from, from interacting with the county, specifically separating that from the LEC Authority, working with the county has been great, and I think we've emailed a few times about different requests and with Mr. Loomis, and I think Mr. Gill sometimes, I can't keep them all straight, but we've, that hasn't been the problem. In fact, I was going to say, if you want to do anything, I would just write down whatever you're doing right now as the policy. I, we just think ultimately, the Board of Supervisors controls whatever money with theoretically whatever strings attached to it to the LEC Authority. Totally understand the precedent, we're happy to give out whatever we get to whomever, but my last thing is, could I enter this letter into the record or whatever?
No, it was, I believe this is what you sent to the board.
Yeah, I don't think it quite made it in the, my fault, Ms. McDougal, I don't think it made it into the packet, but it's the same letter.
I'd move to receive it then if it wasn't in the backup.
Second.
This is my Raddick, saying my binger.
Nelson.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay, passes five zero. Go ahead and make sure she all has a copy. Yeah, just, yeah, we've, we've received it. Yep. And that really led to this, as Mr. Nelson said, this discussion, so actually appreciate you bringing this forward, because it's tough to communicate what the county does in relation to the LEC Authority in a situation like this. We, we fund them, but they're separate legally, so, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, Item Twelve from Board of Supervisors, Mr. Taylor for action, this is approval to delay the public hearing for the Salix Drainage District from February twentieth to March nineteenth of twenty twenty-four.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So, if you remember back in the December fifth board meeting, we had around forty Salix residents attend the public hearing, and all of them, I think, to a person spoke in favor of some sort of Salix drainage district, but they had a lot of different avenues and ideas as to how that should go. So, we haven't done this in nearly a hundred years, and so we tapped the brakes, measured, hopefully, twice and will cut once. In doing so, this board set February twentieth of twenty twenty-four as the next date. I called Patrick at V N K and said, can we have some, some kind of informational meeting where you could take different proposals from those who are going to be affected? And he said, here's my only problem with that. Notice has to go out to every affected landowner forty days prior, and so if you back up February twentieth, forty days prior to that, you're looking at something like January tenth, and as I, as intriguing as it might be to have a, a big drainage meeting between now and January tenth, he said, you also have to realize, I need to take that public input, and I need to either re-engineer, reroute, or do whatever it is. And so, the question that I had is, well, why can't we move that back a month so that we can buy that time, especially with the two-year extension of the Farmer's Drainage District? It's not like they're in desperate need to have something tomorrow. So, had good conversations with Dr. Wagner today, represent that area at least geographically, and had, I think, two or three really good ideas, and so, in my conversation with Patrick, he said, you know, we could do something, and I'd proposed Thursday, January eleventh at five P M., just because that's when people are off of work, I think having it here would be just fine, that would give them enough time to receive public input. And I think the goal is, not everyone's going to be happy, I mean, I think we know that with this, but if we could get consensus where ninety-plus percent are happy, and maybe the three, four, or five people that aren't say, you know what, I might not love it, but I can live with it, or it's going to have the least impact to my property, so that's the goal here, so.
I don't think there's anything to disagree with, so I'll move it. Second, my Raddick. Any other input? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay, passes five zero. Item Thirteen is reports on committee meetings, you all were here, well, four of us were here for the roundtable, and that went very well. Again, thanks to everyone involved, and especially county staff, you really, you really stepped up, and I think gave them a lot to think about, it went exactly as I hoped it would go. And, you know, we did record it as we do all of our meetings, and I sent that out to those legislators that missed the meeting, and already heard back from a couple rural communities that said they watched the whole thing and really appreciated seeing that, so good on everyone for, for doing that. Anyone else?
I had a conservation board meeting last week, we accepted bids for the campground work at Little Sioux Park, and we believe that some of them might be able to get going yet this winter, but the work is supposed to be slated to be done in time for the Memorial Day weekend, so we're excited for that. Also discussed a little bit the swimming pond there at Little Sioux Park. Obviously, the low water levels have kept that swim pond closed for the last couple of years. Looking at the forecast for this winter and spring and summer, looks to be another dry hot one, so most likely, it won't be open again without some changes, and so we've, we've got a few avenues that we could potentially be able to get that pond open, and so we're going to check into that. Then this morning, had a soil-water conservation board meeting. Interestingly enough, they're having a lot of conflicts there. Essentially, what these, a lot of what this board does is they help install some water mitigation dams, that sort of thing, throughout the county to try to help mitigate big rain events, that sort of thing. A lot of these structures are good for fifty years, that the board is responsible for their maintenance and upkeep, well, a lot of these have, have come due, or they're just expiring, they're over fifty years old, and we're in a drought, and so everybody's wanting to take them out because they haven't been needed in the last two years, and so there's kind of a lot of legal questions that are being posed as to, okay, yes, we were responsible for fifty years, but the easement was permanent on these structures, so can, so anyway, I think we're, we're leaning towards, we're going to have to have some meetings in Des Moines with folks from the state attorney's office on legal purview we have over these structures as they age out of their fifty-year span, so just a new problem that didn't exist ten years ago when they were forty years old. So, other than that, that is all I have.
All I have is, we had our ship meeting, and they're just expanding services, and they just completed a complete reorg of just mission values and just who they are, just updating, and they do that about every five to seven years, and so, they just completed that, and then we had the, Chairman and I had the W C I C C meeting, just updates is that less people are clicking on spam, so it's good, becoming aware of that, and how to read correct URLs, so that's good. And then just, we're seeing John and his team are upgrading equipment and redundancy systems, and so it's just good to see the county's being protected from an I T standpoint, and they're doing a good job with installing more safeguards and security programs to protect us from any type of cyber attacks or ransomware, so that's all that I have.
So I had SIMCO exec and SIMCO board of directors, which was not a very heavy agenda for December, but we did elect officers for the upcoming year, which the slate stayed the same, so John Winkle will be the chair, Dan Moore vice chair, I'll be the secretary, Lance Hedquist as treasurer. I got to chair the meeting because John and Dan were both gone, and so it goes to the secretary, so that's the first time I got to chair one of those, but probably it'd be the last, but it was, it was the Christmas meeting as well, so we got to thank our drivers, our employees, staff at the board office, so it was a, it was a fun one to be a part of and, and just thank them for their year.
We're moving Emergency Management Commission meeting to December twenty-eighth. I think a lot of people may be out, but I'm going to be available by Zoom, and then just wanted to highlight, I think everybody got this in their box, Martin Luther King Junior, Sunday, January fourteenth, I'm a part of that choir, and those are just incredible people that I, I hope, if we have a quorum, that would be a good thing, and I'm sure we could post for, so that's Sunday, January fourteenth at six, at First Congregational.
Item fourteen, citizen concerns. Any citizen concerns? Name and address, and you're three minutes.
Mark Scaff from Sioux City. The last couple of board meetings, I've been sitting at home on the couch, as I usually do, watching you guys and work and Dennis, and I happen to overhear a citizen drop my name's wife a couple of times, Dr. Michelle Scaff. She is a deputy auditor with Woodbury County. From somebody that doesn't know her making comments about her to somebody that does know her very well, I just wanted to come up here and say a few things. Michelle has quite a long career in public service. She's had a double major at Iowa State in psychology and English, and a minor in biology. She immediately left college and went to work in public service with Story County, working as a matron dispatcher for that county, and then was hired in Sioux City as a telecommunicator, nine, oh, nine-one-one operator in Sioux City and Woodbury County. She continued to work at that job when she took time to improve herself educationally, got a master's of science degree in administrative studies from the University of South Dakota. She took a job to be director of a law enforcement intelligence information sharing center here in Woodbury County that covered sixteen counties in western Iowa. As director of that organization, she worked with federal, county, state, and local law enforcement, sharing, facilitating the sharing of law enforcement intelligence. She was then worked, worked as a director of emergency management here in Woodbury County. She worked with local governments throughout the county, helping them prepare for man-made or natural disasters and emergencies, and I can testify to the fact that she did go out on weekends, I remember one time she went out to Cushing to help bring them water when their water supply quit working. That was above and beyond the call. She, in that position, also took time to obtain her doctorate in political science at the University of South Dakota, she was the first woman to obtain that degree from that. that institution. Her published dissertation is on implementing technology in law enforcement. This gets us today. She told, she's continuing to serve as a deputy auditor. She performs an multitude of tasks, including payroll. She works with Dennis here on a regular basis on finance issues, and a lot of time she's at home, working weekends, evenings, putting out fires, answering the phone. When she's sick, she logs in and takes care of her work at home. She's dedicated to this county. She works long hours to make sure the job gets done. Even when she's sick or on vacation, as I stated, she makes herself available. Michelle performs her duties in a apolitical and ethical fashion, with an emphasis placed on professional and courteous service to everybody. I guess I'm kind of biased. I'll admit that. I know personally the type of person and employee she is for this county. I'm very proud of her. I love her, and that's all I've got to say about that. The second issue I want to bring up is I really appreciate the effort each and every one of you put into this job. Being one of the people that sit at home and watch how you guys perform your obligation and duties, it's, it's impressive. It's just flat-out impressive. You guys take the heat, you respond appropriately, and you work with everybody you can possibly work with. And Dennis, you're amazing as well. And I guess I could say that about all the department heads in this county. The citizens of this county can be very proud of the work you guys do. And that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Are you referring to Citizen Bill Turner saying that your wife does a little dance with Pat Gill when he comes down?
Could be. That could be the emphasis behind my appearance here today.
Okay. And Dr. Scaff, did your husband go beyond three minutes?
I think I forgot to time.
It's rigged.
Merry Christmas. Merry Christmas to y'all. Thank you.
I would like to say that I was unaware this was going to occur.
He dresses up all nice. It's board meeting night.
Tony, I'm going to get Sheriff's Office. I'm going to need some help here, Dennis, to explain this. This is for information right now, and if you guys need me to bring it on the agenda, I will. Every year, we do the JAG grant that we get and we share with the City of Sioux City. A year and a half ago, we applied for the grant for, to buy a portion of a Chevy Tahoe. It was awarded $27,000 and some, and some change. We bought the vehicle as the budget year was ending, and it's a, I don't know what the name of the kind of grant is. You have to spend the money, then they reimburse you at, when it comes in. Anyway, we bought the vehicle, and the money didn't come in until after, after the, that budget year was over. It came in in August of sometime. Working with Dennis in his office and Michelle, we have the check for $27,000. We want to put it back into our vehicle budget for this year and, and work on purchasing another transport van that we're going to need for the US Marshals. Dennis, if I'm doing right, telling you, told me to bring it to you guys because it'll take some moving around in the budget.
And when I told him, the board does not like surprises made with budget amendments unless they have them kind of formally approved, because you're supposed to approve them before they spend it. In this case here, we'd like to put the $27,000 back in general sup where he can buy another transport veal, vehicle. They are going to need with the influx of transporting prisoners, and I think they'll cover the rest in their budget.
Correct.
I, I don't see any issue with it. I just think if we could have it on an agenda item so that we could take action, if that...
That's fine.
Yeah. I, don't you think that's most, I don't see any issue with it, though, or being apprised of it tonight.
To keep you aware of, that we put on our amendment list, we'll do in May.
I, I will make a, a item then. Thank you.
All right. Any other citizen concerns? Item 15, any board concerns? Yes?
I just wanted to commend you and the rest of the board for having the legislative forum. I thought that that was very, very good, a good way for citizens to also meet with legislature, legislators. Dennis had an item in terms of budget, and I wondered if that would be appropriate to bring before and be received, or if you'd like to delay that until January 2nd. So, kind of asking. It, it's basically the, the response to the request for the situation of funds.
Yes.
And so...
Jeremy kind of alluded to, I believe, last week, that it'd be nice to know how much our 3% raises accounts, the whole county would be, affect our budgets. Our big concern is general basic and rural basic. It is strictly informational. For general basics, it's 695,000, 455. That does include the 6% for the county attorneys the first year, and for rural basic, it's 43,000, 340. They do not include step increases, which are union contracts or wage plan if they fall within that, so it'll probably be more than that. To give you an idea, in general basic, we got 704,000 new money coming in, so probably won't cover all the wages there. And in rural basic, we got 87,000, so we're fine there. So, it's just information. January 2nd, I'll give you somewhat of a state of the county where we're at with our total budget. Start a budget hearing is usually January 9th. We'll have to skip to 16th, I'll be out of town, and then we'll get back on track there. But January 2nd, I'll have an overview and hopefully have budget books to you before the end of the year.
And then my follow, thank you for that. My follow-on question for Chairman Ng is, have you settled on a time? I know we have some...
Yeah, that was my next. Yeah, so our next meeting is January 2nd. I believe 3:30 is the time, but I still need to confirm if that works for you, Mr. Raddick.
I, you know, I always prefer the 9:00 AM, but, you know.
Right.
Just because then I can come before work and not have to try to, you know, just like our legislative day, you know, I fully intended to be here, and then the other manager called in sick, and then another employee called in sick, and the next thing you know, I was shorthanded and no way I could come. So, I, my preference would be 9:00 AM if we can make that work. And I know that's probably, well, you wouldn't be in school at that time, would you?
Yeah, yeah.
So, maybe, maybe we could make it 9:00 AM if, if that's possible.
If it's possible, do it earlier. Any other board concerns?